There you go.
Yeah, I know, sorry. Well, the last two times we haven't used any of them.
As we go through the agenda here, there'll be some things that we do with consent votes, which means that we'll bump a few things together, but we will allow questions from the board members on each one before we take a vote on it. Just move things on real quick. Treasurers report, go ahead, Tara.
Okay, item 4.1 is a donation of $2,049.86 from the Springbrough Amateur Wrestling for the purchase of wrestling mats and a clock. Also, we have item 4.2, which is a donation for the junior high show choir. It is for batteries, paint, cake, and flowers valued at $209.94. So this is the two donations we have on tonight. Item 4.3 is the financials for February 2016. There's a few things that I wanted to note on the financials. On your tabs that you guys have, under the cash flow section, under the reconciliation page, which is the first thing under the cash flow section, you will notice that there's been a few things added to the reconciliation. There is two OASCO pools. One was from 2002 and one was from 2004. These items are being held outside of our district funds. They're reservations accounts that are held by US Bank from previous projects that have happened in previous years, and we've been informed that there's still money left in those reservation accounts. So they're being held at US Bank right now, and I have a meeting next week with them to try to figure out what we can use them for, if we can use to pay down debt, or what. They've not been on the district's books before, but they've always been held since 2002 and 2004 by US Bank. So we're going to get some more information on that. Also, the athletic checking account that we have has not been part of our reconciliation. It's a separate reconciliation that's been being done, but it's not on the actual reconciliation that gets approved each month. And the auditor suggested that we add it to the bottom of the reconciliation just for it to be out there, so as it's approved monthly by the board, it's out there for them to see. So I gladly added that onto the bottom, so that will be going forward, it'll be on there each month. For revenue, for February, we received a little over $7 million in tax payments. They're coming in each week, we're getting a good chunk of money in, so that's good. Also notable, for February, we had some investments that matured. We received over $15,000 in interest in February for those investments. So we're actually already over what we've received the past four years. We've already received more this year in investment interest than we have in the past four years combined, and we still have several months left to go, so that's good. For expenses, you know, I did a presentation for you guys a couple, last month, on the Saturday, and we were going through the budgets and the monthly estimates, which the monthly estimates are not always something that you can use, and I've told you guys this before because we're front-end heavy, especially with supplies and materials and capital outlay, because we purchased a lot of the stuff at the beginning of the school year. So it'll appear that, you know, if you were to take a 12-month, you know, analysis and just divide it by 12 and say, "This is about how much you would spend per month," they're obviously going to be over for the first several months of the school year because we're purchasing all of these things upfront. But as you can see, if you look from last month to this month, we have definitely closed in the gap by about half of our overages for supplies and materials, and we're actually under budget by a little over $600,000 right now. So everybody is doing excellent. I think everybody is really watching every dollar. We've aligned a lot of different things that have saved and been very cost efficient. So right now, we're about $600,000, a low over $600,000 under budget, but there are two items to note. We have Jonathan Wright, that's going to be coming out, $250,000 approximately for that. That's going to be happening within the next couple of months, the bills will be. We also have $113,000 that we're going to be paying out for workers' compensation. So those two amounts, we'll draw those amounts back down to around the $300,000 that I had told you before that we were looking, that we were hoping to be under budget by about $300,000 this year, just based off of some decisions and things that we've made along the way and saved money. So finances are looking great, great is exactly how I expected them to be. We've got some supplementals coming up here in the near future that will pull down some of those, some of the savings that you can see right now for the expenses, for salaries and benefits. So we will have those supplementals, so there'll be a little bit of a reduction in that, but still, we're still looking around $300,000. We're going to have some changes maybe that we're going to have to be bringing to you guys here within the next month. That might eat away a little bit of that money, but so far, everything's right on schedule.
You're a great double, Tara, by the way, you really do.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the finances, that was 4.3. 4.4, this is the resolution to accept amounts and rates that the Budget Commission determines, and it also authorizes them to collect the necessary taxes and distribute them to the school district. This is something that we approve every single year in March. I think one year we did in April, but it's supposed to be done in March. And this just, it shows that, if you look through the packet that's on Board Docs, it basically shows you how much we're anticipating collecting. It also shows you the amounts of the millage rates that we're collecting on each levy that we have, and then obviously the projected revenue. We're at 46.28 outside mills right now. Our bond retirement and our emergency levy were reduced as our values increased in the last reappraisal, so that's why you'll see it went from 8.78 to 8.38 for the millage amount for the emergency levy, and it went from 6.8 to 6.49 for the bond retirement. So that resolution tonight is just to approve what the Budget Commission determined, our amounts and rates to collect starting July 1, 2016. So that's what that is. 4.5 is our last amendment to our audit. They keep coming back. See, what they do is they set up a budget at the beginning of the year, they look at previous year's audits and try to determine what their budget should be set at, what anything additional that they have to look at or investigate, or as new things are handed down, like we had the Gatsby, a new Gatsby thing that came out that actually ended up costing a lot, then they have to increase their budget because there's things that they didn't anticipate having to look at that they were charged by the state to look at. So this is our second amendment, it's an additional $3,075, but this is actually, they're finished, we're going to be doing our post-audit next week, so there won't be any additional charges. So this was just for them to let us know that there were additional costs for the audit than they had anticipated, so that's what that is for.
Again, we don't have any recourse on the fact that these things have increased, right? I mean, it's sort of one of those things that we had to do this, so you now have to pay this much more, right?
Absolutely. Anytime a call is made, or if something new, a new bulletin has been passed down to them and they say, "Okay, well, while you're doing your audits this year, you need to look at this." Well, that wasn't in their original budget proposal, but if they give us back in March of the previous year, they give us that. Like, we should be getting next year's budget soon for next year's audit. So anything that happens in their intermittent time that they're charged with looking at isn't in that budget because they didn't know it was going to happen. So it's fairly typical for them to have amendments to audits, and so, and you can see that, you know, the different items that cause the overages for each thing. So yeah, but this is the last one because they're finished now, and this is actually right in line with what we paid last year for our audits. So we actually have low audit costs compared to the district our size, but it's still, it's still a lot of money, so, I mean, for an audit. So that is 4.5, and the last item I have is 4.6, and this is the approval for the additional $177,500 to be transferred to subsidize the athletic program. We did the first half in October, and this is the second half for them to be able to pay the supplementals and things that we have to pay to close out the rest of the year for athletics. And I'll really be looking at this towards the end of the year, after the transfer's made, if they're going to have any type of substantial surplus at the end of the year, then we can always transfer the money back if they don't use it, but right now, they're pretty slim on their cash balance, so they're most likely going to need the full $177. So it's easier to just transfer it over, and then if they don't use it all, we can transfer it back. So, but I have to have it board approved before I can make the transfer.
So this was an agreed-upon amount?
Yes, it's in our five-year forecast, $355,000 a year is in our five-year forecast, and this is the second half of that $355,000 total amount to subsidize the athletic program.
Got it.
So that's all of mine.
Okay. Do I have a motion to...
4.7.
To accept... Yeah, approval, yeah. 4.7, approval. Okay, second. Any questions? Will call?
Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad? Solange?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. 5.1.
Yes. I apologize, I hope I didn't lose my glasses, I forgot them in my office.
I have some purple ones.
Oh, that's quite a lot. I might like them, that I'd be wearing every meeting. We have quite a few things here tonight. First, we have in 5.1, the creation of the job description for the Executive Director of District Operations. 5.2 is the creation of the Executive Director of Student Services job description. 5.3 is the creation of the STEM teacher position and job description. And 5.4 is the creation of our maintenance supervisor position. And that position, if you recall, is going to allow Mr. Pennell to take care of HR since Mrs. Vincent's going to take care of all special ed, SST, core instructional systems. The 5.5 is the ninth-grade principal position and job description. 5.6 is the Director of Instruction job description. 5.7 is the administrative contract for Mr. Pennell in his new position and job title change. 5.8 is the administrative contract for Mrs. Vincent in her new job, new title change. Keep in mind, I know their salaries are posted, those are not pay increases. John and Lee have always gotten $8,000 for John to be testing coordinator. We used to spend about $30,000 for that. Lee's position that she gets $8,000 for, we used to get that through the ESC to spend $18,000 on that. So each of them get $8,000. It's now, I've waited two years to make sure they could do all that, they're able to do it, so now it's going to become part of the Springbrough job description in the future so that we never have to pay separately for that again. I priced those out now, and for the testing coordinator, would have still been about $30,000, for Lee's position would have been about $30,000, and we're going to pay eight for it. So the only other supplemental that I need you all to think about, and I can't advocate for our treasurer, but last year, she received a supplemental to do our CCIP. I did price that out, and for us to be able to maintain that on the operational side of the superintendent's office, I'd need to hire another administrator, which I can tell you now, started by $85,000 or $90,000, because there's a lot of work that has to go into that. So I'm hoping that you will continue the CCIP supplemental for Tara so that she can continue to do that for us in the future.
Explain a little bit what that is.
Well, what the CCIP is, our Continuous Improvement Plan. What's the purpose of it?
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive, continuous improvement. I think there are two Cs in there, I mean, come on, really, make this simple. But basically, for us to get any of our federal funding, any of our grants, we have to justify what's happening to be able to receive those. But the thing is, within there, it's all these formulas and money that you have to know, a little bit has to go here, a little bit has to go there, and quite frankly, that's not my expertise, I'm not a treasurer, nor would I want to be, but for her, it's very simple. She can sit down with us and say, "Explain to me, based on your district goals, what this plan is," and then she's able to plug that in and take care of all this formula work that has to be done. So on her end, it's a lot of work because it has to be updated multiple times, and then they're always emailing us. For me to sign off, for her to explain the rationale for things, that's a constant. They're always wanting to know about our federal knowledge.
Plus, they want to also know everything you're doing educationally, so I have to reach out and talk to several people trying to figure out exactly what you're using the dollars for, does it qualify? And then they want to know, you know, there's all these different components that you have to meet in order to be eligible to use the money for that. Are they HQT, are they, you know, I mean, there's all these different things that you have to go through, and then there's checklists, and then they audit you each year on it, so you don't want to do it wrong. I mean, it is a lot of work.
Well, highly qualified teachers, HQT, that all goes to her department, not mine. Her, our EUMAS coordinator takes care of that in our district, the EUMAS coordinator's in her department.
Yeah, that is someone who needs to help.
And a lot of special ed. That's how, like last year, when we got back the, what's that money called? The, that you guys, you and Lee worked on?
Oh, the catastrophic cost, yes.
We were able to get back, I think, $276,000?
It was plus the $270,000.
And the most that we'd ever received, like $50,000. So only, when I started here, that full CCIP was not being completed because they just didn't have the staff, and we didn't have a full-time treasurer. When she came on the scene, now it's being completed. So in my mind, in my own personal finances, anytime I can spend $24,000 instead of $60 to $150,000, I'm spending the $20,000. And I'm glad we have people here with capabilities to be able to do that, so.
When will we be...
I hope the next week.
Okay, it'll be next week.
Yeah, I just have to get her to agree to actually just put it off.
Is it pretty common for that function to sit with the treasurer, or is it varies?
It varies. It depends, it depends. A lot of time, it's a curriculum, and it's a split between a curriculum person and the treasurer because there's two different sides of it. If we had a curriculum person that would be able to do part of it, that would be awesome as well, but it's just...
Right now, our curriculum people, Mrs. Cook, who's going to oversee Title I and everything else we've added, and me, we don't, we don't. A district this size, we should probably have more curriculum people. We're doing fine, stop it, but we don't have the people to spend time on that, because they, she will have to go to Columbus often to get training on that, make sure everything's in there, and accept the calls, so.
I don't mind doing it all, because I definitely don't want it to cost a whole bunch extra for us to have to go outside. It would be nice at some point if we were able to have, you know, more in curriculum, then it would be, you know, I would be fine with letting, who said that, go to?
But to be perfectly honest, though, even if we hired another curriculum person, they only are ever really going to do half. We don't plug the numbers in. I mean, that is something that our treasurer's going to have to do, so.
So you're going to play a role one way or the other?
Yeah, and I don't mind doing, you know, it's not that I mind doing it at all, it's just, you know, at some point, if there was another curriculum person, at least it's part of it, at least that part of it.
So it seems like it's taking use of extra time because your area is not curriculum to figure out the right place to go when you're asked curriculum questions.
Well, she's got to spend all the time going out and meeting with people.
Yeah, right. There's, there's over probably 200 questions in there that has to be updated each year, and it wants to know your plans, it wants to know your system, it wants to know what you're intending to, how you're going to reach the kids, how is this going to benefit, how is, I mean, it's things that I have to actually get the information every time from somebody, so that's the tricky part.
Which means talking to principal, me, Lee, John, and everyone has to give feedback for it.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. President, I apologize, I can't remember where I left off, but so we're at 5.8, we talked about Mrs. Vincent's contract, and then of course, Mrs. Cook, she is, there's not a pay increase there, even though it looks like. She's moving from 220 days to 230 with a new job title, since we're reducing our curriculum coordinator position. Mrs. Cook's also going to oversee Title I, Resident Educator, and Third-Grade Guarantee. So, and I know that sounds like a lot more on her, but our principals do a lot with the Third-Grade Guarantee. Her work's really going to be with Title I, and she's looking forward to doing Resident Educator. That's basically our new teachers, and she'll help guide them and help them with the things they have to complete for the state. Also, 5.10 is the administrative contract for Tracy Griffin, who will become the 5.10 principal. The 5.11 is the administrative contract for Diane Stacy with the title change to SI. She needs to do that, or we need to have that approved. Also, 5.12 is the administrative contract for Mr. Franks, who has a title change to be the junior high principal. 5.13 is Mr. Aker, he has a title change, therefore he needs a new contract. And of course, 5.14 is Jen Johnson. Her contract is actually expiring this year, so we need to renew her contract, and Mrs. Hunter's contract's expiring this year, so we need to renew her contract. 5.16 is the resolution to suspend the administrative contract of our curriculum coordinator, which I've discussed this evening. And 5.7 is the resolution to suspend the contract of our Secretary of Special Education Coordinator. Any questions about any of those?
Okay.
I don't have any questions, I have a statement.
Sure.
You know, in thinking about this, appears to be a lot of changes, but something today, Ashley just sent out something that the two of them are doing monthly, and that is where they give a summary. Is this something new, or have you been doing this?
We did this, yeah. Yeah, it's, we did it in the past, it just...
Okay, well, it's, it's amazing. They're doing these monthly summaries of what their departments do, and when you, I mean, it's pages and pages.
Target Board President, he likes all the sexual work.
I like Trina. I love Trina.
He was a former coach and...
It's too much for them.
We don't have to run over any bag, but he expects us to do everything else, so.
I hate people.
It's amazing, if you read through all what these guys are doing and overseeing, we have such a strong administrative team. And something that we have, we're in the middle of evaluating the two of them right now, and something that we've asked them to do this year is something called a SWOT analysis, which has them pull out their strengths, their weaknesses, opportunities for the district to grow and for them to grow, and threats that they see in the district or within their own positions. They put so much time, I mean, we have full presentations that they did to us, for us on Monday, and when you see, when you really see them dig into their positions and what they do, it seems like a lot of changes, but when you look into really what they're doing and what the small administrative team we have with the size of the district that we have, it's amazing, amazing, amazing what they can get done. And I know, and they, they pull it up in the SWOT analysis, all these administrators that are sitting out here, it's because of who they have in these, in this administrative team with the principals, and how they set all of you guys up for the success of the district. So, you know, I know it feels like a lot of change in all of this, but when you see that big picture, and you know, I've attended board meetings for seven years, I thought that I got it, until I dug deeper over this last month in preparing for this, and I heard it at a different level, and I just couldn't be more impressed at the depth of leadership in this district. So I just, I just want to say thank you to you guys, and also to all the administrators that are here and that aren't here. I just, it gives me so much confidence in saying hi to our boys and in knowing that this community of Springbrough has this type of leadership watching over our kids and doing what's best for us, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you have a motion to approve agenda items 5.1 through 5.17? Second?
Second.
Full call?
Stukey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bad? Yes. Solange?
Yes.
5.19, I have spoken to the board about this this weekend. Last year, we had a festival, the Borough Fest, and at that time, we did serve beer and wine. This year, I've met with the committee, and first, I would like to say, I really respect the people who have led this, and the committee that has put this into place, and I'm hoping after tonight, we're able to move forward with this. Board, I sent you a letter last night, it was actually on Board Docs, for you to get all of my thoughts. I really don't want to read all of that to you tonight and insult your intelligence, but I wanted to capture a few points out of that before you vote this evening. You know, when I met with them, the plan was to move forward, and when we announced that plan, I got a lot of feedback of, people didn't feel it was a good decision for us to serve alcohol on school property. But we're looking at the 365 rule for athletes, we have a sign on the front of our high school, parents who always lose the most, and we've had so many issues with alcohol and substance abuse with our students. Why would we, one day of the year, permit this to be sold on school property? Now, I've had the question, what was something illegal? No, nothing was illegal, everyone's 21, they have juice drinking, it was very much quarantined off to the side, very much out of sight from where the kids were at. But I guess as a leader, I think the hardest part of being a leader is listening to the people that you lead. And with the feedback I've gotten from people, and when I really sat down and searched my thoughts on this, I'm asking for you tonight to not allow alcohol on school property at the Borough Fest. In the, in the beginning, the intent of this was to bring the community together and to create fundraising to pay for athletics. It's all going to our turf field. I'm hoping we're going to be able to move forward with athletics because in my mind, it takes alcohol to bring together the community, just hear that rolling off my lips. And it's not that I think I'm superior to anyone else, we all have our flaws, but when it comes to our kids, especially in education, what we roll, we are the role models for them. And for me to ask you to allow that, I just know it's not the best decision I can make. I hate that I've put you in this position, there were a lot of reasons that I advocated this last year, but I guess the moral of this is, I want the committee to know who ran this, I totally appreciate everything they've done, I hope we're going to be able to work together, I hope we get to pull more people into this so that it becomes more of a unity event, not just about money, but truly bringing Springbrough together. Man, this is a great place, we have great kids, great parents, great people, the city and the township had our pain for 25 minutes of fireworks, so this should be a night that we all come together to celebrate, the great place that all of these kids and families are able to live in, Springbrough, Ohio. So in 5.19, if you feel that it's okay to serve alcohol, if you vote yes on that, we will be serving alcohol. In 5.20, if you feel that you do not want alcohol served, then you will be voting yes so that we don't serve alcohol. So I guess it all hinges off of 5.19. It's totally up to you, I would respect your decision either way, and go out and make it happen. That's part of my job, but I am asking in 5.19 that you do not permit the sale of alcohol in Borough Fest, if at all.
Okay. Need a motion? No.
The resolution is the one that you, that was voted on last year, and in that resolution, we did modify that the kids can only get two hours paid to participate, but the resolution you're voting on does allow alcohol. So a yes vote will mean that we're voting, we're having alcohol, and no vote means alcohol is not going to come in. And I'm sorry to be so explaining for all that, I just wanted you to know what you're voting on.
Okay. You need a motion?
Will we possibly comment?
Well, not yet, we need a motion, I'll first. So move to second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I mean, also, I think this is one that the rest of the board are well aware, we spent a lot of time discussing and thinking about, and, you know, I truly think this is an issue where reasonable people can disagree. You know, I can certainly see both sides of the argument, you know, and I, I hear a lot about the message we're sending our kids and that sort of thing, and again, I've shared with the rest of the group that I've struggled with, with that, because I don't know that I necessarily feel that there is a conflict in those messages, you know, in terms of legal adults consuming alcohol, you know, in a sort of responsible manner, that somehow conflicts with the message of underage individuals should not drink. I'm not sure if I, if I see those two things as necessarily being opposed. But having said that, you know, so my personal feelings aside, I mean, I think that this is, you know, for me, really a decision about supporting the administration. Again, I think my, my personal feelings may differ, but at the end of the day, I don't think that this is something that I feel strongly enough to sort of go against the recommendation from the administration, and it's not a situation of being a rubber stamp, you know, I certainly don't think that's the case, but, but I do appreciate the concerns that you've brought forward and the rest of our administrators have brought forward, and, you know, from where I'm sitting, you know, my personal feelings aside, I think it's best, in this particular instance, to defer to your judgment, and I share what Mr. Petrie said, that I, I would hope that we can find a way to move forward in having this. I know there are going to be some individuals that, you know, that probably aren't going to be pleased if this does go down a path of not having alcohol, and I, and I understand, you know, where they're coming from, but, you know, we talked about the messages we're sending our kids, you know, I would hope that we're not going to send a message of, well, if we can't have alcohol, we can't have this event to bring people together, because I do think that would be the wrong message to send to our kids, and so I'm hopeful that we can find a way to, to move forward without alcohol and bring the community together despite not having the alcohol, because again, I think that would be the, the wrong message to send, that, you know, we can't do that unless we have the alcohol there, so. Again, I appreciate all of the feedback we've received, you know, I know it was discussed at the District Parent Council, and, you know, we got a lot of feedback from the various administrators, and again, I just, personal feelings aside, I think this is one where I'm comfortable deferring to your judgment. this is one where I'm comfortable deferring to your judgment. Lisa?
Yeah, um, it's definitely been a tough discussion over the last couple of weeks. I guess, one struggle that I've had with it is the way the discussion occurred, and I would hope that our community, when we come together, can do so in a respectful way and can work through things in a respectful way. I don't, there were just some things that disappointed me, and I would hope that when we do things, that can always be done respectfully, and I think that it's our, our job to, as a board and as administration, to listen to the people that we're here for. And I do feel that I, this is where Jamie and I don't fully agree, and that's totally fine, that's why we have a board of five, well, almost five, soon we'll be a board of five again. Four to four right now. You know, we're not going to always agree with everything. I'm not comfortable with having alcohol here, so my vote will definitely be no here. You know, we sat at District Parent Council this morning, and when Todd brought it up, there was one mom that said, you know, last year, when I sat there with my friends, we're like, finally, we get to be an Alder Fest that brings in money. And then, once she heard the concerns and the fact, I said, you know, one thing that we asked was, are there any other public schools that are doing this in Ohio? None. And I said, to me, that was a big lie, maybe because this is not, I said, I'm all about thinking outside the box, but to me, there are so many potential risks here for the district that as a board member, I don't want to put ourselves at this risk. So, there's, you know, it's this position that would put us at risk. So, there's two things, that it puts us at risk, but there's also a message that it's sending to students. But outside of those two things, I just really hope that we can get to the point that when we don't agree on a situation, in a situation, that we all do this in a really responsible, respectful way. So, hopefully, we can all get there, and that we can all come together with this and come figure out a great community event that, where we all come together and can do something great for the schools. You know, the, the fact that the community and township came together and they're doing this fireworks, they're paying for every cent, is amazing. So, I think that whether, hopefully, Borough Fest can come, you know, if we vote no, a majority votes no, that they could still come behind, behind it, and we can all come together and figure out what does the community want. So, I think that's the bottom line, is we've got to figure out, what does the community of Springboro want? And that's where, once we figure that out, I think that lots of people will come behind it and say, let me help here, let me help here. And, I don't know, that's what I had to say.
Charles? Yeah, I have some comments. Uh, this is very hard for me, because I took the lead as a board member last year to help the committee and move forward with it. I myself have been to Borough Fest, or to Alder Fest, and I've seen what it can do money-wise to help the athletic department and stuff, but, you know, after all the discussion, you know, I look at it from this standpoint. I was a head coach in many sports while I was here. There are many things that I and my assistants didn't agree with, but I had to take into consideration their opinions and what they thought was best to move forward. Now, I had the final say as a head coach, but if I didn't have the support from my assistants for what I wanted to do, it, it wasn't going to work. One of the big things was, and I spent the other day talking to numerous people, Mr. Martin, a number of head coaches and stuff, with Mr. Petrie's permission, and I saw that from my assistants, those guys who worked for me, there wasn't any support there. And, you know, so that, to me, is very important, just like it was when my assistant coaches would come to me and talk to me. Like Jamie said, I don't know that there would be problems and so forth, just the same thing he talked about, but I think I have to defer also to you and your resolution and your belief, because one of the things, when we came on the board, the three of us, Charles, myself, and Dr. Malone, we were going to give you guys the opportunity to do what was best for our students, which I didn't believe was happening, was one of the reasons why I ran. So, with that being said, I also cannot support, and I will go along with your resolution to not allow alcohol. So, with that said, can we take a vote? Roll call, please.
Stuckey?
Yes. Or, he, Billy? No, that's right, no, I'm sorry.
Anderson?
No.
Thad? No. Colony?
No.
Motion passes.
Fail.
Thank you. It's not.
We could skip 5.2 now.
No.
5.2 is going to include alcohol.
Oh, you have to do that.
We changed the resolution to not have alcohol. Prove that, still allow them to have.
So, with 5.2, my first time here, thanks, everyone's being...
Doing great, doing great.
Do you have a motion on 5.2? Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Let's move on to 5.2 policy revisions.
Yes, this is our first reading. We have a lot of anti-harassment policies on here, bullying policies. The policy for administration, that's a brand-new policy. The others, I think most of those are redlined, where you can see what was changed. I do want to say, I appreciate Mr. Pennell taking care of this. I've been tied up this week, so he did take care of these, to make sure that what you asked for last time was included in these, so that you can see the changes taking place. But if you have any questions about those, we'd be happy to entertain those tonight. If you have questions over the next two weeks, actually, it's longer than that, we'll have another board meeting until April 14th, if you'll email John and I, we co-chair the policy committee together, and we'd be happy to answer your questions or get an answer for you.
Is there anything in your policy committee, Lisa? I just, I think it's always helpful to have, like, context of what is bringing about some of these changes. If there's anything from the committee that's worth sharing?
They were pretty much Neola-driven.
Right, the...
Am I saying Neola-driven?
Correct. These, yeah, they were driven by Neola, and, and like the, the, if, the anti-harassment policy for administrators, that has been developed years ago, it's just, it was never brought before the board to be included in the board policies. That's why it's a new policy now. The other ones, it's just the addition of some, some changes that occurred actually two years ago that weren't updated. So, we're a little bit behind on a couple of these policies, and that's why we're, we're getting them up today now.
And they technically have, I asked why we need to have anti-harassment and bullying, and legally, there has to be a bullying policy.
Policy, correct.
They can't be under anti-harassment.
Correct.
So, that's why there's an additional, a separate one.
And any bullying issues we have, there's a spot on my superintendent's page that explains all of that, that's something we have added, we're required to have, so...
And you'll notice that, uh, a couple of the policies are almost all redlined, because ours were, had been, you know, written differently than what Neola recommended before. So, basically, even though there, there are changes, they're almost, they're really a replacement policy, because they're getting them in line with the law now.
Do we have the place on the website that has the person to go to for the bullying? Is that what we were, was this the policy?
That's harassment.
That's the harassment, right, correct.
Mr. Pennell, the male harassment officer, and Andrew Hood is the female harassment officer.
But is that on the website? Wasn't that...
It will be in a minute, because we were, we were waiting, um...
For the...
Oh, so it has to pass, and then we could put it up?
What, no, the, the positions to be approved.
Yeah, it has been on there, and it will be updated now with their new positions, with their new titles. That, that was the only reason, I just didn't go through the actual step of adding it.
Gotcha.
We haven't been, you're all approved before we can change them, so...
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Have we had a question?
No.
Not yet.
Director of Human Resources and Special Education report.
Chairman Superintendent, we are asking for approval items on the personnel report. Items one, scrutiny. On item 6.2, we have the pleasure of bringing forth for approval the high school summer school brochure of positions that Mr. Meyer addressed at the last board meeting, so that is ready to move forward. And we have item 6.3, and that is from the Special Ed Department, that is approval to go ahead and hire and run our extended school year ESY services in the month of July for the summer for our special needs students who need some specialized services in order to have them prepared to come into the new school year without much regression.
Is that all, like, clear, Greg?
Could be a dense.
Okay. So, we need 6.4 approval of the previous items, 6.1 and 6.3. Do you have a motion? So, wait a second.
Second.
Roll call?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thad?
Yes.
Yes. Business managers report. John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your consideration, today, we have two items. The change in lunch prices for next year, as we talked about last time, it's to bring us in line with the, the free reduced federal lunch program, so that we're, we can get those funds. And then, approval of the contact, contract with Apti that we talked about earlier in work session today.
Do you have a motion to accept the items 7.1 and 7.2? So, move. Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson? Thad?
Yes.
Yes. 8.0, board member reports, comments, questions, announcements, future considerations. 8.1, appointment of members to the Business Advisory Council.
What this is, anytime, even though I leave that, when we have community members that are on one of our advisory councils, all of them are approved by board policy. So, we need your approval to allow them to participate in this.
Do you have anybody you don't want?
Well, I tell you, we, we have about quadrupled the number of people on this, so we've really pulled in a lot of local business owners, so I'm really excited about this.
Do I have a motion? Go, quick, we're after that, yep. Second? Questions, comments?
How are these selected?
Uh, we sent out a notice, and really, to a lot of people, and asked if they want to be on this committee, and we try to get a variety of backgrounds and experience and hit a lot of the local businesses. And at the chamber, I've made comment a couple of times about, if you're interested in being on this committee, please call the office. And Karen and Ms. McGuire work together, administrative system, all organizing all these, so it, it's worked out well.
I know a local business owner expressed interest in being more involved, and so that's, I didn't know if this was an exclusive, if this was you offered up and he's part of the chamber, so, okay.
We actually did, we partnered with the chamber, and they did a special mailing just for us to...
So, the opportunity's been there.
Yes, since, I think our first notice went out in December.
Oh, yeah. Then it was...
Perfect, okay.
And we're required to have this by law.
Right.
Great, it was a great fight. Okay.
Roll call?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson? Thad? Yes, Simon?
Yes. 8.2, comments and questions from the board. Jamie?
Yeah, I just, Charles sort of hit on this earlier, I just want to formally express my thanks to Dr. Malone for his service to this board, and regrettable that, that he's not able to continue, but I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, that I appreciate his, his service and his willingness to do so, and wish him nothing but the best. I enjoyed working with him in the short time that, that we were able to. And I just also wanted to say congratulations, and we have some of the administrators here that are, that are moving into new positions, and I just wanted to, to say congratulations, and really, you know, I think that I appreciate all the work that has gone into, you know, the thinking through some of these changes, you know, that Todd and his team have done, and I just wish you guys nothing but the best as we move forward, so thank you very much. Lisa?
I mean, one thing that I have appreciated with the board is, through all of these changes that we've worked through and all of the Borough Fest stuff, one of the neat things that I told somebody is, even though we didn't all agree as we worked through the different issues with this, that was totally fine, because we could work through it and go through the questions with each other and totally be fine. And that I appreciate from all of them, that you don't have to agree on everything to all work together as a team. So, thank you to you guys for that. And I appreciate the fact that Todd, when he believed in something, didn't back down amongst, when he was hit with pressure. I look up to that in a leader, because I don't want somebody that, when they have a conviction on something, is going to back down, even if I don't agree with it, because there's times that I don't. And that's okay, I might be irritated and express that, but I don't, you know, that's the thing, when you lead, you need to stand up for what you believe in, and so I think as, you know, we're leaders also, we need to stand up for, and we're not, everyone's not going to agree with us, and that's okay, but that's something I think we need to respect in the leaders that we've put in place. So, I appreciate the team that we have around us. That's it. And Dave did a great job, because you were put in a very difficult situation.
Yeah, I just echo, you know, the best for Dr. Malone, hats off to our new president here. We've been president during, very controversial, we've been, we've been a lot of discussion, a lot of, a lot of discussion. Dave's done a great job of, of trying to figure out what was best for, for kids, and best for Springboro schools. So, I commend him, and all the board members. This is the way it should be, but you, you don't always have to agree, but you should be able to talk and discuss, and I learned a lot from listening to two new board members.
For the chatter.
And, as well as everyone else, and, and congratulations to all the administrators. I, I think this, I give Mr. Petrie a lot of credit, and our treasurer for putting this forward, and the administration, I think this, it's a great school, and sometimes we lose sight of that, but some of the failures that happened, but it's, and you guys will all do well, and I hope, I hope you see this opportunity and challenge, and, and make this the best system we can.
Uh, I also want to thank Dr. Malone for his service. He and I, the way back, and it wasn't real easy to see what happened and what he did. Congratulations to all the principals and assistants in their movement forward, and look forward to working with you in your new positions.
Can I say?
Yeah.
I, I just, like, first of all, I hope the best for Dr. Malone as well. I hope he gets to enjoy his house in South Carolina with his grandkids, because I know he's busy. But I'd also like to take this time to thank the board, and I, you know, I've been stressed, because I, I mean, we asked a lot on this agenda tonight, we did, and I know we've spent a lot of time talking, and for people who aren't here full-time, and all of you are very busy, there's a lot of trust that goes into this, but I, I can tell you, I believe in these administrators. I believe that they put the needs of kids first. And I know I spend a lot of time talking about instruction, but the most important thing is when kids come to school, they're safe, they're happy, and they believe in the people and trust them that are taking care of them. I believe our administrators do that, and I'm willing to make changes like this, so I have people that can do that. But more importantly, it's you that makes all this happen, and you spend a lot of time reading and asking questions on weekends, and I just don't think the public realizes the amount of work that goes into being a board member, a good board member. And I just wanted to say thank you, because I know Mr. Stuckey, he did take the time to come up and talk to people, and a lot of times, for my position, that might make you uncomfortable, that doesn't make me uncomfortable, because I know at the end of the day, he's going to listen to what's best for these kids, because his actions as a teacher show them. So, I just, I'm thankful to have you guys here and appreciate your support.
Want to thank John, his presentation tonight?
Yeah.
All right? They did a great job. And then, I also want to thank the board for the discussions I've had with you over this week and a half.
Thank you, I forgot to say that, but thank you for, you know, all that you've done, and look forward to having you service better.
Yep, and then, I look forward to finding our fifth board member.
I don't know if there's enough room. I like spreading out, leaving it along the table.
Need to add another table, maybe. All right. All right.
Did you hear him say that? He's going to be here today.
I like having all the states.
John, put them back.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I can, yes, they're back.
Turn your cover around, I think that, that needs...
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Eight point three, announcements, future considerations, move it.
Come to Sen Fest.
Monday night.
Monday?
Let's come and talk.
With that, uh, we will adjourn to go into executive session, um, executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations of state statute. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fad?
Yes.
That will move in, adjournment, thank you for coming tonight.